Did you club? You want to club, club place.
Following the meeting of March 16th order and a roll call.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Here.
Counselor Dick Wells.
Here.
Counselor Tom Mallon.
Here.
Counselor Rory Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Susan Snow.
Here.
And Counselor Orr is probably on his way. I don't know.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If it passes, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
For the record, Counselor Orr has just arrived.
And it's mute.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you all today?
Good everybody.
Good.
Jamie, do you want to read the announcements?
Certainly. Spectrum announced that effective March 3rd, 2022, it will cease distribution of CR-1 Russia with a message being displayed that programming is no longer being provided by the supplier. Spectrum also announced that in light of the extraordinary circumstances in the Ukraine, effective March 4th, 2022 at noon, well, excuse me, 12:00 a.m. Eastern Time, Spectrum will drop Russian-controlled and programmed networks in TV America, RTR, Planeta, Rosiah 24, and CTC on the channel lineup for Dune City. Again, a message will be displayed saying programming is no longer available on this network. House Bill 2534 passed the legislative session and may affect homeowners associations in Dune City. The new law mandates that all HOAs have until December 31st, 2022, to review and remove all discriminatory language from their governing documents, including restrictions based on race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, marital status, familial status, source of income, disability, or number of individuals, including family members, people of close affinity, and unrelated people who occupy a dwelling within occupancy limits. The measure allows, also allows for discriminatory language to be removed without a vote of the owners of the board members if certain criteria are met. Paragraph D. A reminder to residents of Dune City, the Dune City Code prohibits anyone from living in an RV in Dune City for any extended period of time unless they are in an RV park. Numerous complaints have been raised about people ignoring this code provision and allowing others to reside on their property. This is a warning that code enforcement will be taking action. I would make a note that the ordinance number 259 that you will be considering in the future addresses this whole RV living issue. And the proposed language.
Okay.
Oh, and I got one more from Charter today. They're raising their prices.
Surprise.
All right, we have any citizen input on items on the public hearing? Melissa?
Nothing. No, thank you, sir. Oh, different.
Okay. Well, I'm a citizen, I do have some input that's not on the agenda. And I have, I have two, I'll stand over there if you want.
Okay.
Keep your pants on, my lord.
I always do. I have two apologies to make. Last meeting while setting the stage for my good-of-the-order demonstration, I was implied, it was implied that I, the cameraman could be bribed. I sincerely apologize to Alan Campbell. Alan is consummate professional. He has tremendous technical skills and unmatched integrity. Alan, please accept my sincere apology. My, is that all right with you? Okay. My second apology may seem a bit off, I'm glad the newspaper's here. While watching the news, it seems that I may have heard some feelings with the Sayuslaw news, and that was not my intention. I have great love and appreciation for local newspapers. Small-town newspapers represents our heart and soul. There isn't anything harder than trying to provide meaningful content under vicious timelines. They have to make a profit. It is now well documented that I dislike Zoom meetings and video conferencing. In fact, Zoom meetings should be in the lexicon dictionary under oxymorons. These events are anything but meetings. They're useful tools, but should be preceded by or followed up by real meetings of the mind. They have, they have to do with the integrity of the content. The news, the newspaper event that led me to finally, to make the demonstration in the last meeting, was the publishing by the Sayuslaw News, now the famous letter, "Yes, Virginia, There's a Santa Claus," to the editor. If, if it appears, the, the self, the purpose, the premise of that letter was, if it appears in the New York Times, it must be true. The reason why people believe in the answer is because they trusted the content integrity of the editors. People don't read retractions or corrections, and if they do, the damage has already been done. I don't buy the National Enquirer. I do listen to the TV news, I do listen to the TV, the radio news. I, I even subscribe to the Reste Garde. But I do read the Sayuslaw News. Thank you. But it is an apology, so I was just trying to make my point. Now we had special considerations. The first one on the list is appointment of a new mayor.
Discussion first.
What?
Discussion first.
Discussion, let's discuss. So appointment of a new mayor. So I had this discussion with my neighbor, and she was under the impression that we were supposed to take applications for at least way of city council or something like that. I don't know, is there a truth to that, or can we appoint people?
You can appoint people, yes, they would need to supply an application. The standard for right now, for early on, is, you know, we need somebody right away.
But we have.
So what, so what you can say is, yeah, you have the procedure that he is acting, that the President of City Council is acting as mayor, and you can either confirm that or make a decision that, no, we should appoint people, let's open it up and have people submit applications. Or, or you can say, one of the counselors, do you want to step forward? There's anything, a meeting number of options, but tonight's the night to talk about it and how you want to, what you want to do. The procedure is for him to stand in, and that's what he's doing.
The important thing is to find a replacement counselor.
That's a credible piece, yes.
And my thought was that we have people on the planning board that are pretty capable. I know two in particular, and it's asking them to apply.
Well, I think we should open up to several people, and if we're talking about city council members, I wanted to make a plea that your city councils should represent the demographics of the community. I am not the only female in this community. I think we need more people to represent the demographics of the community.
You know, I agree with you, and the two people I was thinking of are of the other democratic demographics in the planning commission. But I think we should encourage people and tell them.
But they're good on the planning commission, I just don't want to limit it, limit to them. We have a lot of people out here in Dune City that would be good, and I'd like them to step forward if they would like to.
I agree with you, it's just that I think maybe somebody needs some encouragement and kick in the pants to do it, and so there were two people that could do it, that's my thought.
We do have a member of the audience that is interested in applying for the position.
Good.
My, my feeling is, I think that Sheldon would make a good mayor. I would like to move forward on that and make a motion to have Sheldon Meyer as an appointed mayor, not acting mayor, as far as the city council goes. I think we can wait a little bit, I'd like to have some more input on that and open it up for more people, whoever they may be, to throw their hat and ring on that one. But it is important for us to place a mayor tonight, I believe.
I, I agree with you. I'm not running, I don't want to run for mayor. I don't know if I'm going to run for city council, because by the time I'm going to be 70 soon, I don't want to be that. But I do have some comments and some concerns. Is, how many of you have that pocket, two-minute elevator speech that you can talk to people about? Because we all should have that, and this is, and I was actually prepared for that, you know, like, you know, my name is Rory Hammond, I'm the city counselor that represents 1,200, 1,400 residents and 1,200 voters. Dune City is 143rd largest city in the state. What's unique about our city is we have eight, 640 residents and 840 households. My concern is roads, water, water rights, and general well-being of the public. And we need a mayor to do things like have that elevator speech to talk to us about it and have some strategy. And what disappointed me is two members of the council canceled the meeting when we meet 12 times a year. And I know it's out of respect and things, maybe I would have rather delayed it instead of canceled it. Those aren't leadership qualities. But I know that you've been a mayor, and you should, and you do a good job running the meetings, so I have a little problem with that. But I'm going to beat on you a little bit, because you're going to be the mayor, and tell you that I expect those things. We need to have, we need to have a vision and some strategy.
What meeting is canceled, the last one?
The last one.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Rory, I'm sorry, what was, what was your objection to that, to how that?
We, I could imagine, I could have imagined or rather seen it postponed instead of canceled entirely, because we only meet 12 times a year. And that's, that's not enough, or is enough. So, and only two people, we, we didn't get polled. We didn't have any input what we should do or not do. Two people, and so that's not really, we need to do better at working and talking to people.
There is a motion before us, I'd like to second that motion. And Duke, I agree with you that we need to have a mayor in place, but, and I also agree with you that we want to take a little time and interview people who may be interested in the position before we bring that to the, to the council for, for a decision.
That's where I believe.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I agree, we need to take time. I just wanted to put it out there, since we have the newspaper here, and that it should be open, that we get a greater demographic of the community, because this is not the demographic of the community.
And I agree with you on that, Susan, absolutely.
And one respect, we got a whole lot, a lot of old people.
Yeah.
Shut up, you know, over the view.
Oh, I know, it's scary.
Watch it.
No, I, I agree too, I, I agree with you. Doesn't hurt you making a comment.
Well, in deference to, I was the one that decided in consultation with our staff to cancel that meeting out of respect for our former mayor and to give us a little breathing time. And there was nothing more critical than Jamie and staff to have enough time to get their stuff put together. And had there been anything important enough at that particular point in time, I would have certainly gone on a record of supporting a meeting. It just, I still think I made the right decision.
I was, I also thought it was a good idea not to have that meeting. And I said so to Jamie, so.
And I agree as well. I think postponing it was the right thing to do.
We, we need a, we need another council person, and we've delayed that 30 more days. So, that's, that's my point. So, you know, we need, we need to talk about, we need to get together and talk about it and have some strategy instead of waiting so long. Because it is a tragedy that we lost the mayor.
Yes.
There is a motion, a seconded motion on the floor.
Call, call for the question.
All those in favor of the motion to make you the mayor?
That was the motion.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Aye.
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 And the next logical election time is November, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which would give us plenty of time to advertise and think about and talk to and recruit and.
Well, see, I wasn't Bob's term in two years. I don't have a problem with you being mayor until the next time. That's, you know, we just need to have a council member soon.
I agree, we need a council member, and I think we need to have a mayor as well.
But we got, we just.
We have a mayor.
You have been through, finished Bob's term.
Yeah.
And this is only my third time as big mayor.
Your name's up there way too many times.
The last time we had an opening, as I recall, there was a, a group of, a small group of the councilors that formed a search committee. Is that something, or an interview committee, or whatever you want to call it? Is that something that we want to do this time and then have that committee make a recommendation to the, to the council?
Do you mean for the council member or for the next mayor?
I mean for the council member.
And let me say that, since I was the one that got voted in.
Yeah. Yes, you were.
I do know that process.
Good point.
And I want to make the point to Rory, that took several months to put that process in place, but look at the quality of person that you got.
And we got an inclusive one, you know?
Oh, the humbleness is.
All right, so as I understand, I've been elected mayor.
You have indeed.
You've been not, yeah, you voted, not elected.
We haven't voted.
We voted.
You won. Unanimously.
We're going to form a committee to interview and get ready to appoint a new counselor.
I, I don't know if we need to form a committee, I think we should just put it out that we're accepting interested parties to.
Applications.
Yeah.
On very notice, and.
Yeah.
We expedite this and make it happen for the next meeting.
But I don't think that would hurt to have, be able to look over the applications before the meeting and.
I think we should do it the same way that we did it with you.
Yeah, because that, I think that was very good to interview and ask the right questions and.
Yeah.
But wasn't, wasn't that a small group, like 20, 300 members?
I don't remember it being a small, but it's small.
Yeah, there were three.
What's that?
I was one of them.
Less than the juror.
I'm quite sure that's how it worked.
Were you taken in the back room and arm twisted?
I was taken in the back room and interviewed, yes, by three different people.
Really?
Yes.
I don't remember that.
Well, you know, even if in that we could do interviews, everybody could interview, but we just don't have to be together to.
Yes.
That could be, I mean, that could be an option there. I just want to get people, I just want to make sure we nominate people and tell them that, you know, please come. And also I'd like to hear people have, see what their views are before, before we get, before we have chain meetings and get called. I'm afraid to go and talk to these guys, because I might get accused of having a chain meeting. So I would certainly want to not depressure them to get ideas. The other thing was something.
What are you proposing them, Rory?
Well, I, I think that if we, I think it's a good idea to have interviews. We ought to get some people, and maybe set up meetings to talk to them, for everybody to talk to instead of just a small group, but separately, or two or three or something. They might think it's a pressure thing, but it's not really, I think it's more of a good to know you.
Right.
I remember it, I was on it, and I don't remember it being just three people.
That wasn't the council.
I don't remember it being three people, huh?
He said it was three people.
I think it was a, she said a council, we just, was it?
No, not, I mean, it was after there had, there had been a, a process.
Right, the process was, I was interviewed by a group of people several times, and then the council got the applications that.
Well, do you think that would be good? Some sort of abbreviated fashion, so it's not quite so formal or lengthy as last time.
There were quite a few applications though last time, if I remember correctly, so.
Yeah, but we really, yeah, I think it's a good idea, but we did make it kind of formal. It seemed a little long-winded.
Yeah. So do you think there should be a screening committee and say these are their top three choices than having interviews?
That's, that's what I would like to see.
Awesome, dude.
I think it's a little more efficient that way, really, yeah. And those, those three individuals that are brought to the council may be quite different, individually, different perspectives, different viewpoints. I, I just think it's, it's better to do it that way than just everybody who's interested come before the, the whole council, that's all.
Make a motion?
So, I moved, I moved that we have people submit applications and give them three weeks, and then have whoever wants to look at the applications and then choose the three best candidates and have interview them separately. That's the motion.
I'll second that. Okay. If anybody wants to.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So the only other thing that's left here is who's going to back you? Who's going to run the meetings when you're not here? Because there's, we're now without a cap, cap council president.
What normally goes to the, will go to this guy.
Yeah, normally would, but it doesn't go to him.
Well, see, it's a good thing we talk about it now, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you'd make a good one, right?
Well, but if we talk about seniority, it might be there too. I don't care if I have to do it.
I would love to do it if you guys would.
That's funny.
If you can tell me, Bob don't want to, because I'm down below them. They have seniority.
I'm a good man.
No, I'm, I think that's a good idea, Susan.
You have seniority too, so.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I don't.
I, I moved that Susan be the council president.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like you got it, Susan.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And would this be the right time to ask for three volunteers to be the screening committee?
I would love to do that too.
All right, I know they have you on that.
Since I was on the other side last time, I'd love to be on.
Right, and plus you're representing a segment that none of us do, so I, I think that's very hard.
I volunteer to be on that as well.
All right.
Now I have a question, well, before we get to the end here. Should we include any part of the public as part of that screening?
I don't think so.
Just a member or.
We didn't last time.
I know.
But it's a.
Black mayor is a mayor of everybody.
It's a good question. Who, how would we determine that person? What about somebody from the planning commission, who isn't a candidate?
I would say, no, I would say somebody from the public.
Okay.
And if they want to show up at a meeting and say, yeah, wave their hand and get them on the list.
I'm, I'm okay with just another council member for that. I want them, if they're good enough to review, I want them to apply.
If what?
If they're good enough to review them, I want them to apply, because I want somebody who's confident and good and all that.
Are we making this, though, more complicated?
Yeah.
If we do that, so then we have to find the right person to be on the committee so that then we can find the right person to be on the council.
Yeah, that's right. So I would really not do that.
I think that should be a council.
I think it should be a council.
I think.
So Bob, you want to do it? If you don't, I will.
To do the, what, be on the?
Be on the screen, there's three people, there's, you want to do it? If you don't, I will.
Um, I would like to do it. I will have to be a little cautious of my time. I'm often very, very busy. But it kind of, I guess it kind of depends on, on how many candidates we get and what time of day we do that and so on.
Well, the reason why I like to see you three, because all of you have different views that I can disagree with or whatever. So I think you'll come up with some good people. Make it easy for me.
I like a group that's got diverse opinions, because that, we get a better candidate.
Yeah. So it's Susan and Duke, and me?
You're going to be the screening committee.
Yeah. Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay.
So we've settled the mayor issue and recruiting for a new counselor, and we need to schedule a budget committee meeting.
You've got calendars in your pockets?
That's right.
Yeah, very good, fine course, comment.
I didn't, I didn't read my map, honestly.
Today is the 16th, so you tell me when you want to get started.
Any day but Tuesday, Tuesdays.
Alan is part of the committee, he has meetings on Thursday at 7:00, so it'd have to be early on Thursday, if you guys did Thursday. So that's just your heads up.
Tuesday evenings would be fine too. So how much time do you need for us to, before you, how soon can you start tomorrow? Can you start two weeks from now?
No, I can't start tomorrow. So I could start a week or two from tomorrow. Do you want me to tell me when? Okay, well, I'm going to be gone for a week starting the 29th, so I would like, if we're going to start it, I'd like to do it before we leave.
How about?
And we have to, once you get started, it's every week after, as you know. And so I would rather wait until after the week of the 29th.
Okay.
So you need, see, the calendar I set says May, and you're, and we went, oh, I gotta look up the March.
There's four people in May.
I think the last page.
So we'll be back the, the 6th, so when you think from the 6th on would be great.
So how about, how, do you prefer like a Tuesday instead of a Monday? Because Mondays are tough for you, so Tuesday night, the 8th? Anytime after 6:00 or 5:00?
Tuesday night is the 12th.
I don't know.
I'm still on the March.
What month are you in?
I'm looking at March, I see, yeah, April.
The 12th would be fine if you wanted a Tuesday.
And it's after 5:00 for me.
I would have trouble making a 5:00.
What, 6:00?
6:00 would be better.
Is Tuesday a bad night for you?
Uh, just that particular one, I have something.
Is Wednesday better for everybody? Because I haven't heard anybody say.
Other than, other than.
Wednesday at 5:00 we have meetings.
So which ones are you looking at, in April? April, it's like, I'm, I'm, I think they're looking at 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th. That's the first meeting, and then it's going to be weekly after that, right? So it's one of those weeks.
The first meeting will be long, after that, we could even do it before city council if we had time, yeah.
If we do it Wednesday, the 14th. The 13th, I'm sorry. If we do it Wednesday, the 14th, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 13th, 5 o'clock would be okay for me, if you all would prefer to start at 5:00.
I, that's fine with me. I remember we had some on the council meeting and I felt rushed to get into the meeting, even when we kind of-
The 13th isn't a council meeting.
But it's going to be every week after that until we get something. I would might like to have it on a council night where we feel rushed, but that's, but that's, but I'm willing to do it. I'm just meant pointing that out because we did, we cut a budget committee meeting off because of the council meeting the last time.
Yes, we did.
So the 13th is what we're looking at?
Probably the 12th or the 14th.
Okay. Thursday nights are bad for Alan, so the 12th or the 13th?
Well, Wednesday night at 5 o'clock, he's got meetings too.
Oh, okay, so.
For the car.
Drop it in.
At 6 o'clock then, is that right?
6 o'clock is fine for me.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I've just got a big problem. I don't want to forget tomorrow.
It's going to be a big room.
That was the last step.
Good.
8 o'clock, 6 o'clock.
Right. Now, to the whole business. Update on coronavirus relief funding expenditure today.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have printed off something for you. Thank you very much to Rory Hammond for all of the changes and upgrades he has provided to the city. For all of the haggling he has taken from city council staff, calling him saying, oh, this isn't working right. And he rushed right over. So we're very close, and the new cameras, they're almost set up, and almost completely done with new security cameras and faster computer speeds and new computers throughout the office. Thank you very much. And that was part of the funding. The other funding, the rest of it, has been earmarked for water systems. So right now, I have worked with, I'm working, working with, and do. I need to talk to Terry, so if you see him, have him give me a call, please do. Working with the Fern Acres subdivision, working with the Alderwood subdivision, and with South Coast Water Company. And if there are others, small community systems, they need to contact me. We can discuss the issues, get it put down in writing, have your respective boards or whoever is in power sign off on it, and we can get started. So that is what the coronavirus relief fund expenditures have been to date, and I want to be able to bring a piece of paper with me that shows you how much we've spent so far. But I didn't run off that report yet today.
You want me to tell you what I, what I've done?
Well, you could say what you have. Alan, yours is already put together.
So my original statement of work was to install the Spectrum Security Suite on all the office computers and provide a pricey worksheet and plan for the Dune City technology upgrade. Very specific, very short. That was completed last week with the install of the Spectrum Security Suite on four office computers and it was involved with the upgrade of your service for our internet suite, these ingredients. The project worksheet I provided had a total estimate of $12,112. My estimate was broken down between network and workstation upgrades and the service hours to complete the project. We spent $590 more on the network hardware. We bought two of the four requested workstations, and we can buy the other two workstations at the same price, will be $132 under budget. I did not provide an estimate for software upgrades. It looks like that cost will be about $1,100. I estimated the service hour costs of $3,960. I have spent about 56 hours of project work and 15 hours of non-project work.
And he bought a Sugar Shack donut.
And I estimate, I estimate another 10 hours of project work for a total of 81 hours of my time, which are volunteer hours. What's missing is the actual cost of electrician, handyman, and staff, which the $396 budget in my estimate should cover. And here's, here's the thing, here's the thing I have there for staff and they want.
Any questions or comments? Just say thank you, Roy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see if it works right after we're all done.
I like the fact it's all color-coded. If you haven't seen-
No, it's still messy.
Oh.
All right. Yeah, it was all on a little shelf at the top of the closet. It's a mess.
All right. The next item on all business is ordinance number 6-A regarding short-term vacation rentals, first and second reading. And there's a doubt, it says no discussion by anyone, including council members, until the public hearing is opened. Public must have signed N to be recognized for comment. So now we're moving into the public hearing. Ordinance number 256A regarding short-term vacation rentals.
Do you need to have first reading first?
No, I want to get through.
Okay. Seating the continuation of the public hearing on ordinance 256-A.
No. Excuse me. First you, first you have to have your first reading, and you have to ask if anybody is, I thought you were going to do a full speech. You have to ask if any of the councillors oppose reading it by title only. You remember all that?
Does anyone on the council oppose reading it by title only?
But now you can entertain a motion to read it by title only?
I move that we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Passes unanimously. Ordinance 256-A, ordinance adding a new chapter, 1, 2, 3, the title 12 of the Dune City COVID ordinances in regard to short-term rentals and other matters properly relating there to.
Now you go public hearing.
Now we'll start the public hearing, and the hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type IV legislative procedure. Staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria, which have also been listed in the staff report. These are the criteria the planning commission must use to make its decision.
It's not a type IV. She gave you the speech for something that would be a land use change. This isn't a land use change.
Okay.
City council.
You'll think you're more practiced than a third-type.
I'm sorry. It's my fault. I didn't do script.
That's what the script says, that's it.
We got another public meeting.
I thought I was doing a good job of reading it.
You're doing a great job.
You wrote my chapter. So what points do I need to make beyond?
Oh, you just need to open up the floor to public comment. All the ordinance.
Floor to public comment. I want to have signed up. And Patrick?
Yes. I read through the document, but you know, at my age, which is the same as Rory's age, we kind of don't always keep it all together. So I made some notes, and most of these notes are simply referencing information that I got on the web in regards to what other cities are doing and what those ordinances have that seems to be in common. And I'm not sure if it's in this particular document or not. So that said, let's just dive in. One of the things that I saw in the documents in regards to Portland and Bend and Clackamas County, there was the discussion of the importance of the state transient lodging tax and how that's collected. And also the note that it's important that Lane County tax, if there's a transient lodging type tax in Lane County, that needs to be addressed. And then, you know, just as far as revenue is concerned for the city, the city could, you know, put a transient lodging tax on this type of a, of a short-term rental. I didn't see anywhere in the document where it really addressed any of those issues. One of the other things, just so you know, I live right next to the place that, on Cloud Nine, has been problematic. One of the issues is parking spaces, and parking spaces, I think in the Bend ordinance, there's something about one parking space for two bedrooms. I think there are five bedrooms in this particular residence that's right next to us. How do you describe a parking space in a residential property? For a business, it's pretty easy. I mean, we look out here and you can see the lines painted on the pavement. Well, in a residence, you don't have that, so how is that even measured? There were also occupancy limits. In one of the documents, the occupancy maximum was five, five individuals. So, or one family. Just in regards to that, at this particular house next to us, there have been times when I wondered if there were a dozen people, because there were, on one particular occasion, there were seven vehicles in the driveway area of this house. And I think sometime even last year, there was a weekend where there were four or five vehicles in the parking area. Oftentimes, the individuals that rent that bring their Dune, Dune vehicles with them, the side-by-sides or whatever. So you've got the vehicle, you've got a trailer, and you've got maybe two of those, and then one or two other things. Andrew Sturgill, who is my neighbor, I talked to him earlier this evening. He's not able to be here this evening because he's kind of under the weather. But one of the issues for Andrew and Tina is that these vehicles that come down, and it's an easement granted to the owner of the home on the lake. They drive essentially down through Andrew and Tina's property, and sometimes they run over his vegetation and they run across his lawn and stuff like that. So, you know, parking is a significant issue and the number of vehicles is a significant issue. I'm not sure we addressed that in this particular ordinance.
I believe that is addressed in here.
Parking, base walk, I don't see.
Pardon?
Base walk, I don't see it.
Could you read it for me, because I don't have a record?
Okay, it says, vehicle parking limit. On-street parking is prohibited in the Dune City area. Sufficient off-street parking must be provided for one-half the total maximum occupancy limit of the short-term rental. Such parking shall be in clearly paved or gravelled area and must ensure a 50-foot setback from any surface water source, and must not be placed on top of an existing septic drainage field or proposed replacement drainage field.
Well, when you have as many, seven vehicles in that particular area, I'm sure that that's not complying, but yeah, it just, it seems to me that if we have an ordinance, we need to be able to enforce it. And some of this language is, I mean, it's kind of specific, but it's not, maybe not specific enough, is the only thing I'm saying here. So, and occupancy limits, again, we kind of get down to that situation where who is going to do the code enforcement? You know, we end up having to be the people that call the owner and say, this is going on. Okay. How often do we have to do that on an annual basis? Well, in this document, I understand that it reads something like, if there's more than one episode per weekend or whatever where you're calling the owner, then, then I can go talk to Jamie or whoever in regards to the situation that's happening. Well, I go talk to Jamie. Jamie can't do anything about it. It's basically already done. So code compliance, enforcement, it's a little weak in that particular ordinance. And frankly, we don't really have anybody, especially law enforcement, we don't have any law enforcement to go to, you know? So, well, just another couple of quick things, and then I'll do a little quick summation as well. The other documents that I referred to suggested that the owner of the property has to have a business license along with a permit in many of these jurisdictions. I don't think that's stated in that maximum occupancy. There was, there were a number of these documents. Salem has a whole issue about zoning, zoning requirements. And, you know, from my perspective, this is a business that's being run next door to my house. And if you don't have a business next door to your house, you can't understand. You know, and as I've said to people along the way, if my neighbor has a party two or three times a year, and they're up until 1 o'clock in the morning making a lot of noise, well, that's two or three times a year. This has been once a month, once a month, once a month, once a month. So it's just like, it's like overkill, if you will, because you can't go to that neighbor and say, hey, you got an invite me to the party next time, because it's a new neighbor. So anyway, the whole notion of zoning and what we do in those particular zoning areas may be something that we need to address as well. Again, in regards to occupancy limits, one of the documents that I read stated that it would probably be important to have a guest logbook with names and addresses and contact information and vehicle license plate numbers, just in case. But here again, that sounds like a hotel, doesn't it? So the question really that I'm having in regards to this particular document is that I don't think it's specific enough, and then there's the whole question of code enforcement. How are we going to handle that? It ends up that my wife and I are the code compliance hall monitors. So anytime, anytime Jamie has a complaint about that particular residence, it's usually Becky or myself, or Andrew and Tina, or maybe John. Anyway, that's, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask me, but that's a little bit of my experience, a little bit of my reading of this. I do think, Patrick, you know, as you know, I've been involved with you in completing on this, and there is definitely a need, there's definitely a problem by your place. I think that your problem is why this has originated here in Dune City and why we have this ordinance now. I don't think this ordinance is perfect, but I think it's, it's better than what we, what we didn't have. Some of the issues that you brought up are covered in here. The only one that I didn't really think that we had covered in here was the idea of taxation. I don't-
I don't remember anything on taxation.
Usually the company that go through pulls the taxes.
Pulls taxes off of that, I just, I didn't remember it. And other than that, as far as enforcement goes, I think this, before, we had no teeth on this. I think this gives us teeth now, and I don't think it's going to take, I don't think it's going to take an every-week advance. If you have somebody that's violating two, you know, a couple of times in a year or something, that's going to give us the ability to do something about it where we never had that ability before.
Well, this document, as I recall, also references having somebody within 30-minute drive. Well, we're talking Mableton on a bad night, we're talking the north side of Florence on a good night. The people that are this turnkey company, I don't think there's anybody that's even any closer than Vinita.
That's why we're going to have an ordinance here.
So, the issue, the issue really is one of an onsite manager or not. And in a residential area, it seems to me, from my experience, if you don't have an onsite manager, things are going to happen and the residents around that particular area are going to be the ones that suffer.
I know that you and your neighbor have had some terrible experiences down there.
Yeah.
I do believe, though, that this ordinance will cover that, that it be from a complaint driven from you, where if we didn't have it before, that if this company, whoever it is, owns that place and they're doing it, they're getting complaints, and it's enough to set off Dune City towards them, they're going to have to do something or they're going to get their license and their permit. Well, then they're not going to have it at all.
Yeah.
Well, at least this gives us a start. I don't like having an ordinance at all. I think, I like smaller government, but the growing pains of Dune City, that those rentals are real, they're here, now we're going to have some way to help the citizens be protected from bad ones.
But if you look at the documentation from other jurisdictions, they will, in one particular document, the owner needs to be a resident at the address for 270 days per annum.
Those are all things, Patrick, we can look at, and we've got to hit start somewhere.
Well, I'm saying it's a good start, but I'm not sure that this is the document that we need. Maybe it's interim, but, you know, we need it, just like we needed a new mayor. If this is the document that we end up saying yes to, I volunteer to help for anyone. How's that? Thank you.
Is it appropriate for us to ask him questions or are we just being testable?
You should. You're able to ask questions of the person who's justifying.
Okay. The only question I have to do, Patrick, is that we had, we did have a thing where we thought that person, that place, property was fine. Did things get better after that?
No.
Okay. Well, let me just say that part of last year was pretty good, but then in January, there were two weekends, or two weeks, where I called Jamie. Unfortunately, I've been gone for the last three weeks, so I don't have any idea about the recent past. But in general, I call and it's taken care of. But, you know, frankly, at 2:00 in the morning, I don't really want to have to call anybody. But...
I think that this document here has the means to take care of that.
We will see, won't we?
We will, but I think it is in here.
Can anyone else have a question, Patrick? John?
My name's John Sullivan. I live on Cloud Nine Road. Fortunately, I don't live next to this house that Patrick's talking, but basically what you have is you've got somebody making revenue off of a place and the people that live on that road are paying for it. That's how bad it's getting. Many times I woke up at midnight with drag racing going on up that road, right in front of my house. And I'll walk out there and it might take an hour for one to come back, but if they're not doing 70 miles an hour, they're not doing nothing. Maybe there's nothing can be done about that. It doesn't do any good to call the police because they don't, they're not going to come out unless you shoot somebody, and then they might, they might make an appearance. But it's just, it's too bad people can't conduct themselves better than what they do. But I've got razors going up that road at 40, 50 miles an hour, side-by-side, just like Patrick was saying, and it's just, it's just a weekend deal. And you can, you know when it's happening because about Friday night, about 6:00, here they come down the road, maybe three, four, or five trucks pulling trailers, the whole nine yards. Maybe it'd be a quiet weekend, or maybe we're going to break the hams out and away we go. It's kind of a mess, and the people that live down there are paying for this. I don't know how many beer cans and bottles I picked up. I didn't see the people throw them out, but it's funny, it happens on a weekend after they're down there. As you're familiar with, the Cloud Nine sign has been gone many times. I didn't see that either. I can't prove it, but I have my suspicion. I mean, you know, but maybe now it says Lane County on it, maybe they'll be afraid to take it. Anyway, I just hope that this works out because it is just, it's, like I said, it's a homeowner that's making money, but the people that live there are paying for it. And it's just not right. It's just not right. Something needs to be done.
We have to do our very best to make it right.
Right, that's right. Thank you.
Any questions? I didn't indicate when this started. I think it was about 6:35. 6:40, I think it was.
6:40?
It was 6:40. 6:40?
Yeah.
Right, 6:40, okay. Do we have any written testimonials?
No. Do you have a letter that I haven't read to you that I need to read to you? I said I do have a letter that I haven't read to you that I need to read to you.
Okay, that's a bigger time.
But that's in something different. That's about something else.
Okay, okay. Does staff have anything to add at this point or can I just close the public hearing?
You can ask me to add after the public hearing, after you close it.
Okay.
Or you could ask the council if there's anybody who wants to hold it open for any length of time.
I want to keep the public...
We're going to discuss this among ourselves after you close the public hearing, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm closing the public hearing at 6:58. 6:58. And we'll return to the regular session. Regular session, we're now in new business. And ordinance 256 page A regarding short-term vacation rentals. Counsel discussion and deliberation. No further public comment is taken at this point. So it's open. John?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Jamie a question. You're the enforcement officer here, right? So when you, with this, if this ordinance is in place, what happens when there are complaints? And what can you do and what can't you do in order to solve the problem?
Well, up until now, all I could do was fine them, which I did the last time. Matter of fact, they're still paying on that fine.
Okay.
Now I can jerk their, it's not a license, it's a registration. But I can jerk their registration and now they can't do business until the issue is resolved. And they have to wait a full year before they can renew.
And what is to prevent them from simply continuing? You say you've pulled their license, they say, "Well, we're just going to keep writing it out." What happened?
I don't really know. I can put a lien on the property.
Okay.
I can prevent them from, I don't know. I could probably go to court in Eugene and seek some kind of injunction toward the company that they're using to rent it, whether it's Verbo or Airbnb or whomever. Probably not going to affect them that much because I'm not sure. The governing document is the document that we don't have access to, and that's the agreement between the company and the property owner.
Right.
So, but beyond that, I would be able to prevent them from doing business in Dune City and renting it.
Okay.
For a whole year.
Yeah, and is that something that's within your discretion? Or does that, how does that decision get made if they have...
Just like all the others do, I enter a notice of, well, first I warn them that they're going, if they don't stop the action, this is what's going to happen or what could happen. And when, if they don't and we continue, then I do the findings of fact, the conclusions of law, and my order, and I have them personally served. Or, you know, I almost always have them personally served with that. And then if they, and in that, I have to tell them that that they have the right to appeal that decision to you guys within a certain period of time by paying the fees and filing an appeal application. And if they do that, then we come here and you guys held the hearing and we go from there. If they don't, then I fully expect them to pay the fine and to live up to the conditions that I have placed on them in my findings and order. And if they don't, then I can appeal to the district court and get them in trouble, and then the cops will show up.
Ah, okay. So there is, there are a series of steps.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I think, Patrick, the point you made about enforcement is a critical one. Now, I want to make sure that we, that while this document clearly has teeth in it, I want to make sure that the teeth can bite, so. And then I want to say, Duke, I hate to keep agreeing with you, but I'm going to agree with you again. And that is that I think this document may not be perfect, but it strikes me that we need to do something. I mean, you guys need some relief. And we can, we have stretched this out for a period of time to get this document right. I think at some point we have to say, "Let's do this, we can revise it if we need to." But I think we've got to, we've got to help you guys. And this has been going way too long. And this is something that, that we think at this point is workable. If it proves we need to add to it or change it, we can do that. But that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Anyone else? Comments?
Well, same thing I said before, I don't like to have more rules and regulations that just are going to paint to Dune City and how it's affecting the citizens of Dune City. We need to have this, I think.
As a start, yeah.
Yeah, a starting point, yeah.
Susan?
Okay. Just because we need another opinion. I really feel bad for these people, but we're putting in an ordinance for a couple of people when 98% of the people are acting well and being responsible for their short-term rentals. And I feel this is hurting those people. I think there's some things in here that would hurt those people and some of those people would not be able to do what they're doing. The people that I know that have short-term rentals are trying to supplement their social security. And so, and some of these things, they would not be able to operate with some of these things in here. So, my concern is that we're putting in a regulation for a couple of bad actors, and I really do feel sorry for them because those people, they ought to take them out and force with them, but...
An emotion?
Yes. But I can't, I don't want to put something in place that hurts all those other people. There are a lot of buying, law-abiding citizens.
Well, if they're complying with this ordinance, then they shouldn't be hurt.
But this makes them do a lot of things and spend other money that is, will be taking away from what they're trying to do. That's my point that I'm trying to get across. We have a lot of law-abiding citizens. I'm really sorry that we have a couple of bad ones. But I don't think we should put in ordinances that will hurt all those good people because of a couple of bad actors. So I'm conflicted here because I don't like some of the things that are in here.
Example?
For example, the insurance and getting that type of commercial insurance that's in here. If you have insurance on your house that covers it, then it's your house. But asking for commercial insurance is different.
Liability, liability insurance, whether you're going to, or you cover the property damage or...
Yeah, this has, the insurance amounts, they have to be in there. And some people can't afford that. And I have to speak up to those older citizens that we have too that are just trying to make ends meet and make a couple extra bucks, and they won't be able to do this.
It's a good point.
You can't really do it on a case-by-case basis because then you get a lot of situations. You know, that would never work.
Are there, Susan, if, if, if you were to, could you, if, given the time, I don't necessarily mean right this minute, could you identify the items in here that you think are going to be particularly difficult for the, for those people you're talking about to deal with? I'm certainly sympathetic to the point you're making, but we need, we need something. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way to, I mean, is there a way, for example, to adjust the insurance requirement or something of that sort?
I was even trying to think, I was trying to think about and see if we could adjust it to with a definition that those that are through, that are actually full-time vacation rentals and those that are doing it like on a part-time basis to get money in. I was, I haven't come up with a good response to that yet, but there are people that are doing it just on an occasional basis. These people are not doing that. This is definitely a commercial thing for them. But not all of them are in this commercial thing just, because these people don't even live in the same state.
Right.
So...
And that, of course, becomes, how, where's that, how do you draw that line?
Correct.
That's the, that's the hard point.
And that's the whole thing is, you know, what's the definition? Because some people are just doing it, you know, occasionally to get extra money, and other people are doing it full-time because they are running a business.
Yeah.
Well, I think the key is that they're running a business. And like I said, first, this is one of the growing pains Dune City's going through right now. Those people that are doing it to supplement their income, they're still running a business and they're still bringing in money. They can adjust their fee for their lodging and incorporate the cost of liability insurance or whatever.
You can't because then people wouldn't stay.
That's up to them.
So, thanks.
But I, we got to do something. I don't think we can do it first, you know?
My elevator, my elevator speech is, what's unique about my community is that we have 600 households, but over 850,000 units. So I'll tell you what I like about this is that it's short. Because I remember seeing something that seemed like 10 times longer and we were, we were getting into the weeds.
It's only a couple pages shorter.
Oh, I think it's a lot shorter. I remember hearing about the weeds, about, oh, it's all kinds of things. And it seems a little more simpler to me. I understand about the insurance. I wonder how much insurance really costs. And the complaints are a reasonable way to do it. I'm actually in favor of this and I don't like a lot of, I'm certainly in favor of this one because this is only 12 pages, 13 pages. Wasn't the other one like 50?
15.
I thought, I thought I saw, I remember it being thick. Oh, I think it was something different?
Something different.
Unless it...
No, it was really...
Was it? It was, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't.
I think she's talking content over something.
Yeah, no, because there was, there was a lot of...
The main difference between this one and the last one is that this one is a permit, which means we are not held liable. If we had a license, we would be held liable if something happened at the house. And that's why we would require the insurance. If we don't want to require insurance, that can come out, but, you know, that's kind of a safeguard for our residents. It's not a safeguard for us, it's for them.
Now, because if they have somebody running down their street at 75 miles and then in the middle of the night someone gets hurt... the middle of that, someone gets hurt, there's some liability that somebody's...
I have liability.
I got it. It, it does say, I don't know if this helps any, but just looking back over this insurance, operating requirement for insurance. It does say homeowner's insurance policy or endorsement that provides coverage for short-term rentals by paying gas and has minimum levels contained in this section may satisfy this requirement. So, it might not have to be, if I understand it correctly, it might not have to be commercial general liability, because it might interpret that...
It still would probably raise insurance rates to people.
So, if I was an insurer though, and I knew that the place I was being insuring was having people living there, I'd want to know that and have them pay for a higher level of liability. So, just, just knowing that as, as an insurer, because some of those rates are, are based on usage and things like that. I mean, if they're a little bit an insurer, might, might want them to pay more or deny the coverage anyway. I'm not sure. I don't know if that's a, I mean, that's an argument, but I don't know, I would think that requiring people who are doing it even a little bit, they need to have, have some liability and responsibility of people doing something.
Yes, they have some responsibility. I'm just trying to not hurt all those people.
Right.
That are doing things legit and not, and following all the regulations of Dune City right now. And that's my concern, is trying to put an ordinance in place to cover people that are being totally up to one end, but there's people on the other end too, and how we do something that will take care of and not hurt these people and put these people...
What I see, the only way we can take care of those few people that are hurting a few neighbors, if you're saying, we have to have an ordinance. We haven't, we've been trying to do stuff without it and it doesn't work. So, we have to have an ordinance to, to do something for the citizens that are, are being affected by that. The other thing I was thinking of, and I don't know if it worked or not, but you can do a case-by-case of the people that are just doing it for money, for income to supplement, and come before us and, and get some kind of a forgiveness or something.
Well, it, it can be put on a homeowner's policy with the city of Dune City being named as a loss payee with respects to liability. That does not make it a, a commercial policy. It's still a residential policy, and I've been through that, not as, it applies to round, it's very close. And there's been no additional cost. So, it's just a wide that they put in the liability section naming the city of Dune City as loss payee with respect to liability only, provided that everybody's happy, of course, with the maximum, minimums, et cetera. Then, of course, there's always an umbrella policy, which is pretty darn cheap, where you keep your liability levels low, your premiums, like your general liability lower, but then add an umbrella, which would increase the protection there. And that's usually pretty cheap.
So, if, what I'm understanding is, this is just one example, and you're saying there's other things in there that might be worth the seven, is, but that's...
And just a couple of other things that I think are kind of annoying in here, but the main thing is, I don't want to have a big cost upfront for these people. And I know some of the people running the Airbnb fees and, or short-term vacation rentals, they're going through legit companies, they're, you know, they're...
That's kind of a catch-22 too, because we have people who are being hurt because we don't have an ordinance, and we're going to have people who are going to be hurt because we do have an ordinance.
Correct.
And, and I see that we have 600 and, uh, 250 houses that are not occupied, so I think the problem is probably worse to not have the ordinance than to have it, just because of the weight of, the weight of the issue. That's, that's my opinion.
I'm not sure that the city would ever find itself in a position to be liable.
Right.
But then, you know, I have an attorney that would tell me otherwise.
So, can we, can we just strike the word "commercial," having the authority out of insurance?
That's what I was thinking.
I move that we strike the word "commercial" out of the ordinance and let it go.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any vote?
I'm good with striking that. There's still some other things I think this needs work.
Okay, well...
And because I really think an, an ordinance will hurt an awful lot of people that, because I've talked to several of them, so...
Yeah. Well, if, if that were to happen, then I think we would need to have some more discussion, maybe some different thoughts. But to not have an ordinance, we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot.
By the way, I think we just, um, accepted a change to a document that we haven't actually adopted yet. I don't know if that is a problem or not.
Well, I'm going to have the motion that we move to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Right, that's at the, when the time comes. A lot, if I may, a lot of people are claiming that having to pay the tax is what's going to harm them, and that is a state law. We have no control over that. But by having a permit process, we will have the ability to report them, because the, right now, the, the tax is collected by the city of Eugene, and they are responsible for looking up to see where the houses were. When I first called them, what was it, about a year ago that we started doing this? We were getting about $300 a month, maybe $400 a month in transient room tax. And I asked the question, who's looking? Because it's all coming up listed as Florence in most cases. And we are now getting, it's gone up and up and up, and we are now getting over $4,000 a month in transient room tax. So, that tells me that there was a lot going on, that we weren't getting our fair share because there were so many people breaking the law. So, there's a difference between helping people out and helping them break the law. I just want to, I want to put that out there.
Okay, and, and just let me say that all the people I talked to all pay the room tax and everything, they were not breaking the law, and that was not the issue. So...
Just being able to report it.
Just in listening to the conversation, what we're talking about here, using the phrase "a lot of people." Jamie, you're a lot of people, you're here from a lot of people. To me, just, if we have a lot of people doing that and then we have the troubled ones, we need an ordinance here to govern over these lot of people. With this getting to be that big of a deal in Dune City, we need to get a hold of this soon.
And Rory made a motion to pass this with the deletion, uh, question four, did you second that?
No, I simply seconded the amendment to it in advance.
So, I, I move that we accept the ordinance as amended.
I'll second that.
Any discussion further?
Um, yeah. Citizen, I'm, I'm concerned before we vote, I'm, I'm concerned about what you're saying. Would, what would, what would help you in this matter? In other words, if we were to say, we're going to wait one more month and come back with suggested revisions to it and discuss those, or, or, I mean, I, I'm also in favor of this ordinance. I, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not doing damage in the process of doing good.
And that's what I want, is I just want to, don't, not to damage those people that are on a slim margin as it is, and I don't want to hurt them because they're our citizens also.
Do you think that those who are concerned will come to the city and say, this is, this is a problem for me and we could address those issues? Or do you feel that this needs to be postponed until we can take a look at what those issues are?
Some of them have already addressed the city when this was brought up before and, and told the city that it was going to be an, an issue for them.
I, I remember that, I just don't remember what the specifics were of, of their concerns.
So, um, all I'm saying is, you've got, we've got a big population here, we're putting in this ordinance, and you're going to hurt some people. I know a lot of people have said that this goes through, that they won't be able to have the extra money anymore because they can't do it. And I'm concerned for those people.
Yes.
So, what I see is that I remember the phone call into some of the people here, the long discussions that we had about how detailed and technical and all the problems with the, and all the issues of changing and change of certain, sort of, they had with, with the things that, how other people were doing it. And I didn't see that tonight. Either we're, everybody's tired out or this is better than it was. That's an observation.
Well, the people I talked to, a lot of them, they're out of town and couldn't make it tonight, but, so I said, I rejoice their, the concern, and just so that we know that there's a big spectrum here.
Personally, I think I'd be a little more comfortable. I want this in place, and I'd love to vote on it tonight. I'm debating with myself right now, because I think if we could identify those specific issues in here that are likely to cause problems to the 98% that are law-abiding and trying to do this right, um, there might be some things we could adjust in it. And voting on it, knowing that there are going to be concerns to a number of people, that, that works.
Well, I, I like what you're saying, but I like to point out, one person testified that we should probably have more rules than what this has.
Yes.
And here's, they, they are advocating having less rules than what we have. I know we're kind of a catch-22.
I don't know if I'm advocating less rules. I think I'm suggesting we take a look and see if there is some way to, to separate. In other words, those people who are doing it on an occasional basis and doing it in a law-abiding way versus those people that Patrick and John are living near, who are, who definitely need to be reined in. And off the top of my head, I, I can't, I'm not good enough at documents like this to, to be able to say, yeah, we could, we could say it this way, and then, and then have it apply only to the commercial organizations.
See, that was, that was the problem that I had with the last one, is that we didn't, it seemed like there was just thousands, except just this and that, and we had to be a Philadelphia lawyer and, and it was, this seemed a lot simpler, and it was easier to read that.
Well, I agree with that.
That's why I'm, I'm in favor of this. I'm not in favor of what was there. And so, and, and I, I really believe that we need to do something, and we've been really needing to do something for about two years.
Yes.
So, it's time that we do something.
Jamie, have you, if you were to go back to our attorneys and say, here's the problem. Is there something we could do to this document that wouldn't throw in a whole lot more language that would make it workable? You know, and, and what would...
I'm sorry. Us being an attorney, a lot less language isn't in the same, doesn't work that way.
That's not the norm.
But, um, there may be a way to change the definition in the document.
That's, yeah, that's the thing I'm thinking of.
That's what I was just looking at, is seeing if there was a way, and there may be a way to change the definition so that people, part-time residents, meaning those people who are maybe rented out for half the year or however many months that they are gone...
Some way to qualify it so that it separates.
Right, right, so it keeps it separate. That might be the best way to go. Although many of these people who do rent it out year-round also reserve their own and they go and they stay, so I've got to be real careful not to confuse it, so...
Yeah, we don't want somebody who comes and lives there for one week out of the year and rents it out for 51 weeks.
For the past year, is that right?
Does that say, well, I'm a, I'm a part-time resident, yeah?
Are we going to even have another public hearing and then have another public hearing? Or is it, I mean, this has been two years. I'm, I'm becoming, I have become impatient, is what the problem is, I think, for me.
I, I don't know the answer, Rory, I, I can, I can simply say that I think we have an issue here. I'm all in favor of getting this done, believe me, but I don't want to make a mistake.
If we were to pass this, when would it take effect?
30 days after adoption.
So, we can have another meeting and try to do some more fine-tuning?
Well, there's no reason why we can't just table it till next month.
Can you say it again?
No.
There's really no reason why you can't table it till next month or plan another meeting in a couple of weeks and have a special session just on this.
But tabling it means that we'd have to have another public hearing, right?
Oh.
We're just...
No, the public hearing was closed.
So, we're in the discussion.
Right.
But then if we start making amendments, then we'll end up having to open it up.
Nope.
We don't, okay. I want to make sure that understanding what's going on, that's all I'm, yeah.
I'd be in favor of a special meeting, two weeks from now. And if you can find out in the meantime, if there's some way we can just tweak that wording a little bit, um, I, I think we might be, we might...
Would you feel good about that?
I would.
How?
Because I, I would like to make sure that the people that are operating can continue to operate and it's not going to harm them.
I'm, I'm willing to withdraw my, me, motion on the condition that we come back in two weeks, well, we'll have to vote on it the next time, but I'm willing to withdraw if, if anybody comes with some substantially good changes. Otherwise, I, I, I don't want to table it and just go with it. But if we can do, if you can do that and make some changes, that might be viable. Because we need to have something so these guys don't have to put up...
Oh, totally, yes.
We need, because we've been doing, it's been two years or three?
Oh, three, I would say.
Yeah. We got to do something.
I agree. And I think we're very close, but I think we, we need to address this issue.
I think we need to address it. I think, I've been down there, I've seen it. I think this is a good document. I think we can tweak it anytime we want to. I, I think we need to vote on it tonight. That's my opinion.
So, he's not withdrawing?
So, we need to vote on it.
So, then they're...
Yes, that's what I think, that's what I think.
Okay, so that was the next question I had, was, Duke, would you withdraw your, your second, which you're not going to?
If he does, I'll make a motion to vote on this as-is tonight, is what I'll do.
Okay, well, I think we should just vote for it, and if there's some things we can adjust up later.
So, I, I'm going to kind of reverse what you were saying and say, I'm, I'm willing to, to vote for this with the understanding that we are going to take a look at the language, and whether we want to meet in two weeks or a month is less concerned to me than the fact that we are going to take a look at the issues Susan has raised in the very near future and see if there's something we can do to make this document work for everybody.
To amend it after we've approved?
Yes.
Possibly amend.
Yeah, possible.
I would invite some of the folks that are going to affect, that are doing it, to show it, to, special meeting.
I did maintain a special email list for that purpose, and they were all emailed a copy of the ordinance, proposed ordinance, at the same time that you were notified to pick up your packets.
And none of them are here?
Two.
John's here.
No, I mean, they're, are nappy with the, so, have any orders?
No, actually, I got a bunch of emails, so they're pretty well covered with this.
So, what, so what I, what I here or saw is that there would be three people came here and saying that they want it even stronger.
Maybe a little more specific.
All right, it's my understanding that we moved and seconded to adopt this tonight. Is there any further discussion before we vote on that?
I don't know if we had a second. I made a motion that we vote on this tonight.
No, no, I, I didn't withdraw. I didn't withdraw, I just mentioned, I said, in the discussion, I said, I'm willing to change it, but I, I'm not going to change it because after what I signed.
So, yes, the motion and the second stand.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any vote?
Host.
Okay, let's make sure that's in the notes, and we will revisit this.
Because I'm going to make sure that it's changed. That's my opposition, is that we're voting on something, and I think there's definite changes that need to be made to protect some of the other citizens.
Correct.
We can do that in a special session.
And I'm willing to do that. I just said, I, I want to see something happening because these guys have been generally regular about complaints with that place, and...
I understand that.
Yeah, no, I got...
With their complaints, you still have people, I don't want to hurt the other citizens too. They're citizens and we have other citizens.
Nobody here wants to hurt anybody.
Citizen, are you, do you feel a special session in two weeks would be appropriate, or do you want to wait till the next regular meeting?
I will be gone in two weeks, so it would have to be less than two weeks.
Or do you want to do it in the next meeting?
We can do it before I leave. It's okay if I leave, whichever, if that's the people.
I don't have this taking actually effective. It could take effective in 30 days, but... It could take effective in 30 days, but it says specifically in there that they wouldn't be required to have a permit until July 1st.
So we've got time to let you go and call that.
Okay.
Not till July 1st.
All right, I like this.
Because I'm talking into the fiscal year, makes it easier for budget.
So we are waiting till the next regular meeting?
Well, the motion passed, but the next regular meeting, we might, we might make an amendment to the ordinance based on.
Yeah, so we're not going to have a special session?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I was thorough.
All right. That'll give you time to contribute some more thoughts. I don't think of anything too.
Because a lot of people couldn't be here tonight. There's several people that Wednesday night just isn't good for them, so.
All right, moving right along. The next new business is to appoint Richard Snow to our Quality Committee.
So move. Say.
Any discussion? Is he still in the Budget Committee?
Yes.
All those in favor of Richard Dunning and us, Water Quality Committee?
Hi.
Who's second, Don?
I think I did.
Now we need to review the annual financial report and supporting documents.
Hopefully you've reviewed them before you've gotten here.
Yes. So we need to take action?
No.
We review it?
Review them and there may be some things, if you have not read the note, the letter to the City Council, the specific packet that is addressed to the City Council, please do so because there are actions that you are required to take. You don't necessarily have to do it right now, but you do have to do it soon.
I'm sorry, Jamie, were you talking about individual actions or a council action?
A council actions.
Okay. Because I know we also have our individual reporting coming up, that's why I was, our.
No, no, that's.
That's a separate.
Now, you got your email about that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That has nothing to do with you, huh?
Yeah, okay.
So the only things that I have is that, I want to talk about CPA judgment adjustments, but I want to do that at the budget meeting, not here. It's not important for me to do that here.
Okay.
That's one, that's one thing I have. I have also another part, in your, in the original agreement, they said that they'd have this done by 12:31, 1:21. What happened? Because it finally, it looked like all the signing things were done by February 10th. How come it took them so long to get this report due? It was two months late past, but it was supposed to be done before the first year.
I would guess COVID and the fact that the payroll was such a mess.
Well, it's the payroll, because it was COVID when we, we had COVID when we engaged them. So that would be, that would be a good enough. And I, the other thing I noticed, the budget request was 12,000. We actually paid 6,000 or something like that, is that true also? Those are the, that's I haven't had that.
No, it's 12,000. We paid the other half, 13,000 actually.
Okay. So then, do we get a discount for them being late?
No, a lot of that was my fault. Because she said, sign these and send them back. Well, I didn't read that part. Finally, she sent me another email and said, Jamie, did you not see? I need you to sign those and send them back. That part was my fault, that was only about a moment.
So in the parts, there's the other part to the council. Are anything in there that are we supposed to talk in executive session or can we talk about here?
We'll talk about them here. Our and Budget Committee, our both.
Okay. Because I read that, I was confused. One of the things, one of the things I noticed is that if you looked at there, there was, it seemed like an eternal amount of pages of them talking about PERS and PERS, it was just pages and pages of them. And I mentioned this to Jamie yesterday, is that what I wanted to know is how many people were we actually on the hook for? Not, not how much, but how many people. And I couldn't tell that from the audit, I just couldn't tell it. And so that bothered me. I'd like to know if we have three retirees or 100 retirees and sick people are going to retire or something like that, instead of contributions and percentages and things. Did you read this, Bob, and see how long it went?
Not yet, not yet.
It took up a Sunday night for me and I'm still not sure if I understood it all. Jamie, is there any training that we need to have done for quick looks?
Yes, yes, either training for quick looks or turn the payroll over to an accountant to do. Why should I don't play my part, Jamie?
Okay, so we review, so discussion and action, or actions we need to take tonight on this?
Not if you haven't read it, so.
You need to read it. I believe we need to read it.
You really do need to read it, yeah.
It's not.
I read it. I don't think I've read it.
Skip the PERS part, just don't even go there.
I read it and then I, and I thought I had read it twice because there's, there's obviously.
There were, there were parts in here that I was getting, but there were other parts.
And there's some like, there's three or five pages and two or six or something like that. It was, I was a little confused a little while, for a little while, but it wasn't easy read.
It's the document that starts out, your counselors or something like that.
Can we take action on it next meeting or should we take action at the Budget Committee meeting?
Either way, well, the Budget Committee just makes recommendations, so it'd have to be council.
No, the only thing I'd talk about the Budget Committee is that we want to talk about the forms that we have and the adjustments, that's what's important to me.
Yeah, proper forms.
Yeah.
Quick question on payroll, and, you know, I'll just take a question. Is there a conflict of interest legally to have a PERS employee doing payroll for other PERS employees, including maybe that PERS employee?
That's a good, so bookkeepers do all the time.
Well, and PERS is PERS, they come, they take out whatever. They take it out on that and what they want.
And the mayor are supposed to double-check all those checks and sign those checks that go out, so he should be responsible for these things during instant expert events. I think that's probably why I ended up replacing two former mayor. Are we ready to move on? Yeah, we, but you guys think we need to, we need to make, take action, you guys need to read it. Okay, and I need to read again because I forgot what page it was on that, we'll find it again.
Don't you read it, send me a note and tell me what.
You want the Cliff's Notes?
Yeah. Our next is a proposal for MedAt to provide an online application for processing business licenses.
Yes, we've been pursuing modernizing things in the office. And one of them is to engage an organization that can process the business license, licenses online so that we don't have to, I mean, this thing, this program would end up even sending them reminders, letters out and everything. And of course, we have the one, each staff member is given, given responsibility and Melissa happens to be the one to do most of the work on the business licenses with help from Claire and permits. And she thinks this is the best thing since sliced bread. She's really excited about it and would like to see the council approve this so that it makes it easier for our contractors to be notified and pay. It would be, there's a fee, of course, with every transaction. I haven't really seen the money part of it yet, to see what that is. It's in here somewhat, so I don't know.
I saw it about five, I saw it, I want to know what, if someone, if staff could figure out what the fees would have been because we know how many permits or whatever we have taken done. And it was like, I saw a 12% and also a money fee, was that correct?
Well, if it's 12%, that would include we're supposed to use their credit card. And we have our own credit card slide machine that this month cost us $660. And every month it's about $200. So, you know, it, it would be about the same to use their credit card machine as it would be the one that we're using right now, but I still have to look into it. I haven't been privy to all of this, I've been busy with fish screens.
So we're not ready to take any action, I'm sure you want to.
They want you to take action, but I want you to know more about it and I want to be able to answer your questions about it.
So the question I would have is, how much is it really going to cost us? You know, just based on last year's thing, if somebody could figure that out.
Okay.
And then that would mean also that there would be an increase in fees because we'd be passing that extra money off, that extra cost on to, to the people putting up the permits. So I think this is the, show that to do.
What I got from this.
Well, this isn't permits, this is business licenses.
Right, yeah.
We'll get the permits in a minute.
Okay.
What I got from this, if I thought it'd be a great aid, it kind of moves a big city opposite of the 21st century.
I'm just wondering how much it costs to do that.
So does everything have to be done online or if someone wants to do it manually, can they still do it manually?
Yes, I understand that, in this case they can.
Okay, I just want to make sure there are people that are still trying to push to something.
If you have a way to make a decision on this later, that's fine.
Jamie, staff is recommending that we approve this?
Well, my staff is recommending, but I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
So you want to put it off for a month?
They'll be mad at me, but yeah. They'll be mad at me, but yes, I'd like to know.
All right.
I mean, I'm with Rory, I got to budget it, you know, so I got to know what it's going to be.
Well, let's put it off for a month then. I'm generally a favor of it, it seems. Yeah, but let's find out the cost. And the last one, your new businesses, staff proposed to legalize the state offer program for online building permits?
Yes, and that one is actually House Bill 2415, passed by the legislature last session mandates, that all the other cities do it that are bigger than us, but it's coming down to us anyway. So the thought was to go ahead and get up and running. This is actually with the state.
It's not costing us anything either. It's because they're providing, it's a service they provide free, I think, right?
A something, there is usually a nominal fee, I think there's a swipe fee or something, but yeah, it shouldn't cost us anything. That's, the swipe fee may be from the contractor, I don't know. But it's to move all the permits onto online building permits.
So you're agreeing with me?
That one, yeah, because we're going to have to anyway.
We had a motion to approve that. I know that we approve it, Claire would also suggest we should do it.
Say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
It's passed. We've been having executive session, reports?
A report that we have a new storage container, is it a container or building, Jamie?
It is a container that is in the process of being converted.
Across the way, it's eight by 24 and it's a pretty secure-looking situation, it looks like.
Yeah, well, it was, it has a mat building for the army.
Okay.
Anyway, so it's almost done. It's been, all the insulation is in there, we're waiting for drywall.
Nice, okay, agreed.
And then I will need all hands on deck to help move all these filing cabinets across the street.
Okay. Susan, what are calling?
Is the application approved tonight? We know how, myself and my husband on the Water Quality Committee.
All right.
We would still like more people to apply for the Water Quality Committee. We need to fill out an application, any volunteers? We did send a note to Oregon for training because Oregon wants us to test differently than we have in the past. So with that being said, I don't want to do any training until we find out what Oregon really wants because they don't want us to use chemicals anymore. So that will change the way we do the sampling because we did add chemicals to some of the samples. So we'll have to change our QA PP once we meet with Oregon. And so we'll do that, we start, and then we can figure out what are the equipment that we still have here, what can be used and what we'll turn in to Oregon. And so we'll have to get that all figured out and then we'll start water testing again.
Okay, good. Any chemicals that somebody can't save their lid? Does anyone have any road reports?
No, well, yeah, anybody? You guys ever?
I could probably answer to do sayeres.
And I really would like to have road reports from all of you, so please, thank you.
Emergency, emergency services report?
I attended the WLOG meeting on February 29th. The city has announced, which most of you probably know, that COVID testing is occurring every other Wednesday, beginning on March 2nd, from 10:00 to noon, but you must schedule an appointment online and it is a drive-up testing. A community fire evacuation drill was held on Muntzal Lake Road on March 7th and the results of the event will be reported at the next WLOG meeting. And a training event is tentatively scheduled for the third week of July. That will last two weeks long, more information will be forthcoming on that. That will be with regard to tsunami preparation, earthquake and tsunami. The storage facility, we've already talked about. The, in addition to the additional, to the document storage, that is where like under your feet right now, you've got, everybody's got storage, there's boxes and stuff piled up everywhere. Those, that is the emergency storage and that way we'll be going across the street. And yes, my last paragraph is to tell Councilor Hammond once again, thank you for all your work. He's here, he's been here more than I have in the last two weeks. And that's all I have for that.
Any other one to business president or senior staff report?
We've had 29 permits issued since the last time we met. 25 were building permits and four were private works. And of those, four were structural, basically, one set was pulled for a new dwelling and then there were three public works permits. The fish screen work, fish screens. Dune City has finally found somebody who will build fish screens. So we are putting together a lot of those, but anybody who's still required to put on a fish screen that hasn't done so, if you have, provide me with the information, please, including a photo. And if you can't get an underwater photo, call them, let me know, I'll send my divers out to do the photo. But I do have to have all the information. The deadline is October 22nd of this year. We will need it ahead of time because that is the drop dead date before the state engineer's office. So we will need those ahead of time installed and proof of them being installed. And if you're interested in acquiring one of the ones from the guy who is now making them for us, give me a call, we'll put your name on the list and we will get the divers over there and do whatever we need to do to get this done. Please help me out on this, I appreciate it, thanks. That was my last, how about the information announcement?
I, I came in a couple of minutes late and I assume that there was some recognition of the loss of our mayor and I would like to, if there hasn't been, I would like to observe perhaps. Was there a moment of silence in honor of our mayor? Okay, then I would simply like to say that I wish I'd been here, but since I wasn't, I'd just like to take a moment and say that Bob was a friend. He was the wrestling, one of the wrestling coaches at the high school. The kids loved him. He was a wonderful mayor and I miss him very, very much. and I miss him very, very much. Thank you.
Here.
Nothing.
I'll, I'll hold a moment of silence.
Just going along with having a opening for a city councilor, please come and put your name on the list, I think the more the better, a real cross-section like Susan said, I think is very important, I'd like to go for the youth, I'd like to have maybe somebody under 50 or someone.
You're talking age, not IQ.
But, well, I'm here, so, we're good, age.
Yes, all right.
But that, you know, please step up if you ever thought about doing that, it'd be a good time to give a shot.
Yeah, my children are 40s. Anything else, I'm good.
I do have this letter, I do have this letter that I was supposed to read.
All right, why don't you read that, I'd be good to you with that.
Okay. Dear President Meyer, Dune City Councilor, City Administrator Mills, and fellow members, while our family never got to know Mayor Forsythe in person, we observed him many times during his televised council meetings during COVID and wished to express our sincere sympathies on his passing to you and his family. He appeared to be a dedicated civil servant from all we have read about him, as well as an amiable and engaging man, and we understood, understand what a challenging time this must be for you all attempting to deal with his loss. Although I finally ventured to attend one of your city meetings on January 19th in hopes of getting to know him and the rest of you better, the Dune City Council's lack of COVID proper protocol, including certain members' refusal to even wear a mask, combined with the lack of social distancing and ventilation, put me and other residents ill at ease. Several citizens of Dune City feel this way as well, many of whom have expressed their abuse to you to little or no avail. Some of us, our family included, have even had loved ones lose their lives to COVID-19 or otherwise suffer from its serious effects. Two of our cousins spent several days in the ICU due to COVID, one of them who died and the other whom experienced permanent damage to her lungs. We also have two young and healthy nieces who have had it twice, one was a marathoner who can no longer run because of the damage to her young lungs. The other is an EMT and now sadly, Dune City has lost its beloved mayor to these, to this terrible virus. It is our hope that Mayor Forsythe's death will give those of you who refuse to wear a mask, out of respect for others, a reason to pause and question the validity of your COVID protocol at City Hall. If you were thinking of our residents' health when Dune City canceled its February public meeting following the mayor's passing, we thank you, but still do not feel comfortable attending March's meeting until you can assure our citizens that all council members will finally be masked and distancing will actually be enforced. Oregon's governor still recommends masking in small indoor environments and that is what we hope you will do. The pandemic is not over despite many people's impatience to move on. Our condolences once again to all of you, as well as Mayor Forsythe's family. It is sad to think that he survived combat several times and was wounded in battle in Vietnam, only to die at home from a largely preventable virus. Sincerely, Gene Jackson and family.
That's good, Jamie. I'd like to just follow that up, if I may, because I'm not wearing a mask tonight and I've been one of the ones that felt very strongly about that. The reason I'm not is because I'm also not wearing a mask during the daytime because that requirement has been lifted at the schools. And although there are still some students and some faculty members who are choosing to wear masks, I'm, I'm kind of following the protocol of the schools at this point, but I'm certainly wary of watching this virus and seeing if we need to go back to masks again and I'm, I'm gonna, very happy to do that if it seems to be necessary. Thank you.
I got something to say about that letter. I think that was out of line to use passing my friend and our mayor for a COVID statement and I don't appreciate it. That's all I got to say about that in here.
Okay, I have a great feeling to see the article in the paper about Gold Island being, getting to reclaim its name.
Yeah, that was very good.
Great place to see the press here tonight, so.
Thank you for being here.
If there's a call for an adjournment, may we go home?
I'll move to adjourn. Or we could just wait for the next meeting.
All right, thank you all. We got all those papers?
If you would declare the meeting adjourned at whatever time it is.
Whatever time it is.
I can't see it either. 7:56. Thank you.